Hello, my name is Abi Bond. I'm a physiotherapist and pilates instructor. And this is a mat work session designed for intermediate students. That means that it's important that you are confident that you can hold a double tabletop position safely. So that means you've either been instructed on how to do that by a physiotherapist or a pilates instructor, either by myself or somebody else. Okay, we're going to start in sideline for clams level two. So if we can get ourselves into a crook lying position. So we've got 90 degrees behind the knee. We've got our feet up in the air, level with bottom and shoulders. We've got our pelvis in neutral. So you're pushing away that top line to open up the space at your waist and your hips are stacked. We're going to engage the core muscles there. We take a breath in and exhale to lift that top knee and inhale it back down again. So exhaling to open, inhaling to close. Trying our best to keep those core muscles working all the way through the set without letting them go and keeping nice smooth movement all the way through. So opening as widely as we can, making sure that we don't drop that top hip backwards. And then if you want a little bit more of a challenge, once you've opened, you can extend away that top line, bring the toes back together and then control it down. So when we do the extensions, we're really locking out the knee, pointing away the toe and keeping the knees nice and wide until the toes come back together and then you can bring them down. We'll do two more. Last one. Lovely, so knees come down, feet comes down. We're going to do clams level three. So we straighten out that lower leg, put the top foot behind the bottom knee and drop that top knee onto the floor in front. So hand wherever you want it, make sure that shoulders relaxed. Make sure you've brought your pelvis back into neutral if you can. Take a breath in and exhale to lift the top knee and inhale to control it back down again. And again, we're opening as widely as you can without dropping that top hip backwards. We want to keep a bit of tension through the leg all the way through. So we're not going to try to quite bring the knee to the floor. You're just hovering it gently and then bringing it back up again. Let's do two more. And then you're going to bring that leg down and relax it on top of the other one. Okay, we're going to bring both legs out into a nice straight line now. So we've got a reasonably straight line between bottom hand and bottom foot. We are hip stat, pelvis neutral, so pushing away the top line for that space. We want our kneecaps pointing forwards, we want our ankles pointing forwards. Now you can have a hand on the floor for balance if you need it. We're going to take a breath in and exhale to bring both feet away from the floor and inhale to gently smoothly bring them back down again. So we're exhaling to lift and we're inhaling to lower. Now remember, as we lift, we're pushing away the top line further. So the feet will glide against each other very slightly. Keep hold of that core contraction. You can bring your hand away if you're able to. I want to make sure that this top hip doesn't rock back. So that's the temptation with this because we're not balanced on very much here. So to get more support, people tend to roll backwards unintentionally. Now try and keep the lower hand nice and relaxed and free as well. So it's heavy on the floor, but it's not pressing into the floor. Now if you want more of a challenge on this one and you're keeping that core contraction going, you can lift away the top line further, bring the feet back and then down together. So we exhale and inhale back down. Last one. Okay, so now we're going to bring the top leg forward and we're going to relax it. We're going to completely rest that one and we're going to work the lower leg. So before we do anything, I want you to inwardly rotate that lower leg at the hip. So your kneecap's trying to point forward and your big toe's trying to reach up to the ceiling. We're going to keep that lower leg straight, we're going to engage the core, we're going to still try and keep that pelvic neutral position, so a little gap at your waist. We're going to lift that lower leg as high as it will go and glide it as far forward as you can take it. Then we're going to flex and pull it back as far forward as you, as far back as you can take it without bending the knee. So point and forwards, flex and back. Point and forwards, flex and back. So the leg should, the foot should be overtaking the bottom foot as it comes forward and you're going back as far as you can, keeping the knee locked. So there'll be a bit of a squeeze of the bottom cheek on the way back. All right, one more, nice and high. And then we'll lower that leg back down again. Okay, we're going to roll onto our backs now for, to get our rest position. So we're going to have our feet and our knees about hip width apart. We're going to make sure the pelvis is in neutral, so have that rock around. Make sure you've got a level triangle across the bony points here. Relax your shoulders, relax your chest. Think about your head being lightly tugged away from the rest of your body. So you're lengthening down the back of the neck. We're going to do a little bit of a chin retraction to find a neutral position for your neck. And then we're going to engage those core muscles. So pelvic floor lifted, lower abdominals in and then relax your arms down on your side. And we're going to take some nice deep breaths, in through the nose and out through the mouth. Just a few times, concentrating on keeping hold of that contraction all the way through the breath cycle so that we don't adjust it. And we want to make sure that we're taking those breaths into the base of our lungs. So expanding our lower rib cage out to the side a fraction without rising and falling dramatically in the upper chest. Okay, now we're going to start with some oblique preparations. We're going to do it in double tabletop. So I want you to engage your core muscles and lift one leg up into tabletop. Then we're going to engage a little bit more fully. We're going to draw down the rib cage slightly so we get those upper tummy muscles working. I'm going to bring the second leg up. We're going to pop our hands behind our head and we're going to bring our elbows forward slightly so you can see them in your peripheral vision. Then keeping your core muscles working, we're going to do the oblique preparation. We're going to bring one shoulder away towards the opposite hip. Then we're going to stretch out that arm to hold it, bring the hand back in and then come down and then we'll go the other way. So we come across the body, we extend away, hand back in and then back down. Now we're trying to keep a pelvic neutral position. So the legs should be nice and still, your pelvis shouldn't be tilting in either direction and you shouldn't be leaning left to right with the lower half while you do this. So we exhale across and inhale back. So we're using all those oblique muscles in the abdominals. Imagine you've got a spirit level across the front of your hips and you're keeping the bubble in the centre. Let's do one more each side. So both shoulders are coming away, but one comes a little further. And we're going to bring the head back down, arms back down by your sides and legs down out of tabletop one at a time so that you can have a little relax while everything's on the floor, have a little tilt around the pelvis to get it back into neutral. Engage the core again and we're going to come back up into tabletop. So one leg at a time, anchoring down with the rib cage to keep you nice and safe, nice and flush across the abdomen. So we're going to do some stretches away, so this is a one leg stretch. So we're going out to 45 degrees with one leg and then we're going to control it back in and then the other side. Now while you're doing this, I want you to make sure that as you extend one leg away, the other knee isn't coming towards you, it's just staying nice and still. And you're keeping the shoulders relaxed, you're keeping their strength in the centre. All right, we'll do one more each side. Okay, and then we're going to bring the arms back into this and we'll do the same thing as we did before with the arms, but we're going to involve the legs as well. So this time, as one arm comes across, that same leg stretches out and then you're going to come back in and then the other way. Now let's do that arm extension as well. So we hold it a little bit longer, stretch the arm out, hand behind the head and back All right, one more each side. All right, arms back down again, legs down one at a time and then when everything's on the floor, you come back. Okay, we're going to do some shoulder bridges now. So we find our neutral position again, how level pelvis, relax the shoulders. We take a breath in and exhale, tuck underneath with the tailbone and peel away from the floor into a nice high shoulder bridge. You take a breath in at the top and then exhale to peel back down again, rolling through the spine and back into neutral. All right, we're going to add in the arms now. So we're going to tuck underneath and we're going to peel up as we did before. We're going to hold the upright position while we take the arms up and behind us and relax them down. And then we're going to keep the arms there while we peel down out of the shoulder bridge. Makes it much more challenging to get contact all the way through the back and into neutral and then bring the arms up and over. So we'll do that again with the breathing. We take a breath in to prepare and we exhale to peel up, rolling through the body. Take a breath in to hold it and exhale to bring the arms up and over. Take a breath in to hold and then exhale to peel down through, trying to get contact all the way through the spine and back into neutral. Take a breath in and exhale to bring the arms up and over. We'll do that one more time. If you couldn't get the back to articulate all the way through, try not taking your hands quite so far next time. So take a breath in and exhale, tuck underneath and peel up, nice and high. Breath in to hold, exhale to come up and over. So if you want to just come to 90, that's fine, or a little bit further, if you can lay them out, do. And then we peel back down again, rolling all the way through into neutral. Breath in and exhale to come up and over. All right, so we're going to do one more version of the shoulder bridge. We're going to try shoulder bridge level three. So we have to do some on one side and then some on the other. So we'll try for three extensions on each side. So we take a breath in and exhale, tuck underneath and peeling up, staying nice and high. We're going to stretch one leg up towards the ceiling, flex the ankle and bring it down, not quite touching the floor. Point and up, flex and down. Trying to keep the pelvis high and level. So we make that the last one. We'll bring that leg back halfway, bring it back in and then peel down from top to bottom, rolling all the way through. Okay, so we're going to try that again. Only for that level pelvis, you have to really squeeze the bottom cheek on the supporting leg to keep up nice and high. So breath in and exhale, tuck underneath, peeling up. Take a breath in at the top, we're going to extend away, flex the ankle and come down. Point and up, flex and down. Point and up, flex and down. We're going to bring that leg back up halfway, bring it back in again and peel all the way down from top to bottom, rolling through the spine and back into neutral. Okay, we're going to do some hip twists now. So I want you to bring your feet together and your knees together, arms out to the side a little bit wider, relax your shoulders, engage those core muscles. Okay, take a breath in and exhale to drop both knees one way as your head drops the other way, push into the stretch and then control it back to the centre. And then the other way. Exhaling out, push into the stretch and inhale back in again. Now we're going to speed this up a little bit with the breathing. So I want you to exhale out, hold the stretch, inhale back in again. Exhaling out, push into the stretch, inhale back in. Now remember, we're keeping the shoulders down, they're your anchor point, they never leave the floor, so they'll tell you how far your knees can go. Your ankles should be locked together, one foot rides up over the top of the other one. And you've always got your core muscles working, but you can add in extra abdominals on the way to the centre. So you lead with your knees on the way out and on the way back, you add in all of those extra abdominals and your core screw back from the rib cage down. We'll do one more. All right, now we're going to do this in the double tabletop version. So we'll just do a few. So we're going to come up into tabletop with the core muscles working. Remember, we anchor down the rib cage slightly to bring the second leg up. Push your ankles and your knees together, arms out to the side. And when you're ready, we exhale out and we inhale back up. So it's the same muscle action, we're still not allowing the shoulders to lift, so you probably won't be able to go quite as far this time. Now remember, if you want more challenge, you can straighten the legs out to 45 degrees. It means they're much heavier from the centre and it's a little bit more challenging to do this safely. So you must be able to control the last one before attempting this one. Okay, we're going to come back to neutral and down and then you can relax. Okay, so we're going to do another version of a hip twist. We're going to do hip twist four now. So again, it's a double tabletop position. So just have a little rejig of your pelvis neutral, engage those core muscles, bring one leg up, engage a little bit more fully and then we'll bring the second leg up. So we're keeping that distance between the knees now. I want you to relax your shoulders. Now we're going to aim to do, to take one leg out to the side a few inches without rocking the pelvis and then bring it back in. And then we're going to alternate. So we're going to exhale to take the left leg out and inhale back in. Now you're working out how far you can go without twisting the pelvis and without moving the other leg. So imagine you've got a glass of champagne on one knee as the other one comes out and then you switch glass of champagne onto the other leg as that leg comes out. Pelvis should stay level. Imagine you've got that spirit level across the front, bubble in the centre, relax your shoulders. Okay, so let's come back to double tabletop and we're going to add in the arms now. So I want you to bring your arms up, 90 degrees to the body. We're going to anchor the shoulder blades down. Okay, so now as your right leg comes out, your left arm also comes out and inhale back to the centre. And then change, left leg, right arm. Now all the movement here is happening at shoulder and hip. So you're not getting any twisting through the middle if at all possible. Exhaling out and inhaling back. Okay, we'll just do one more. And then you're going to bring your arms down, keep your abdominals in, bring one down at a time and then when everything's on the floor, you can relax. Okay, well done. We're going to roll over now. So we're going to do some, some work in four point kneeling now. So if you come off the floor and we're going to start with swimming, the swimming exercise. We're going to do level four, but we're going to just do legs and then we're going to bring in the arms afterwards. So we start in that box position. We want our knees directly underneath our hips and we want our hands slightly further forward than our shoulders so that our shoulders can relax properly. Okay, and you want a neutral position for the pelvis. So have that little rock up and down. Find your midway where you've got a nice flat back. Okay, now we're going to engage the core muscles in that neutral position. Breath in and exhale to stretch out one leg until it's straight and you've still got toes in contact with the floor and then we're going to inhale back in and then we're going to change sides. So we're exhaling out and we're inhaling back in. Now we're just going to do that simple version of this until we can definitively say that we're doing it without rocking our bottom side to side. So you're trying to keep your pelvis in the centre and keep the weight distribution right down the middle. Once you can do that, then you can start lifting that leg away. So you straighten it, you squeeze the bottom cheek and lift away and then control it back in again. So you straighten now, squeeze the bottom cheek and lift. Now, nobody has very much hip extension, so you might not be able to lift it quite as high as you think or you want to without twisting the body. So I want you to make absolutely sure your pelvis is staying nice and level and that you're not sinking your tummy towards the floor as you lift a leg. Now once you feel you can do that and it's under control, you can try and lift the arms as well if you want to. So it's opposite arm and leg together. So as you do the lift of the leg, you also lift one arm and then control it back in, making sure it doesn't tip you over and it doesn't adjust the quality of the movement in the lower half. So the arm is definitely lifting rather than really reaching too far outside of your base of support. Let's do one more. And back in. Good. Okay, now we're going to do the leg pull exercise, leg pull and prone. So we start in a similar position, but you tuck your toes, your toes underneath. Okay, and it's a lift, but it's a very small lift of the knees. So we start in our neutral position again for the pelvis, engage your core muscles there and we're going to aim to lift the knees away from the floor just a fraction and then control it back down again. Now I want you to make sure that it's definitely a lift up rather than a lift forward. So what we don't want is that movement. So we're not coming forward, we're engaging the core and it's definitely a lifting up of the knees and controlling it back down. Now the smaller the lift, the more tricky it is. So let's make it smaller. So lifting just enough to pass a piece of paper underneath your knees and then control it back down again. See if you can do our breath hold at the top. So breath in to prepare, exhale to lift, breath in to hold it and exhale to lower. And again, breath in to hold, breath in to prepare, exhale to lift, breath in to hold, exhale to lower. We'll do one more like that. Lovely. Now if that's challenge enough, then carry on doing that one for as long as you feel you can. If you want more of a challenge, we can, I'll show you the next level up. So you're going to need a little bit more space. So you've still got the toes tucked underneath, but you've got your hands a little bit further forward. Now actually, I'm going to take my socks off to make my feet a little bit more grippy. That's entirely up to you, but you don't want your feet to slip with this one. So you want your hands a little bit further forward, so you've got a bit of an angle here now, but your knee, your hips are still under, over your knees. Okay, so when you're ready, we lift as we did before. So breath in to prepare, exhale to lift, breath in to hold and we come forward into the plank position. Then we come all the way back again into the position from we were in before and then we lower. So you want to make sure that you come back so that your hips are over your knees before you lower down and it's a hold in each position. So we lift and we hold. We come forward into a plank and we hold. We come back, hips over knees and hold and then lower down. Let's try that again. So lift and hold, forwards into the plank and hold, back and hold and back down again. Well done. Okay, right, we're going to come back over your heels now. Relax yourself forward and sink into that shell stretch. And then we'll walk our hands around one way so you get that nice stretch through one side of the body. And then we'll walk round the other way and get the same stretch the other side. And then back to the centre, walking your hands back upright. And we're going to change into the mat. So if you pop your hair rest at the other end, I've got my socks back on. And we shall do clams the other way around. So we do want our crook lying position again. So we want our feet up in the air, level with bottom and shoulders, hips stacked on top of each other. You're pushing away that top line, remember, to open up the space at your waist. Engage those core muscles and then exhale to lift and inhale back down again. And again, exhale to lift and inhale down. So we're opening the knees as widely as we can without rocking back and we're keeping hold of that core contraction all the way through the set. Okay, now I'm going to do some extensions to make it a bit more challenging. So we lift, we extend away, locking out the knee, toes back together and down. And then again, so lift, extend, toes together and down. So the challenge here is to keep the knees really, really wide until the toes come back together so that we're making it four separate movements rather than melding them into one. Let's do two more. Last one. All right, and then knees down, feet down. Stretch out that lower leg, put the top foot behind the bottom knee, top knee onto the floor. So rejig to find your neutral pelvic position with that little gap between your waist and the floor if you can. Relax the top shoulder, engage the core and exhale to lift the top knee and inhale back down. And again, opening as widely as you can without rocking back with the pelvis, so it won't be as big a lift this time. Make sure you're not helping by adjusting the position of this shoulder. If you lean back too far, it acts as a bit of a counterweight. You put it on the floor, you end up pressing to help you lift. So just try and keep your shoulder relaxed and in the centre if you can. Let's do two more. Okay, and then we're going to relax, we're going to straighten out both legs now. You can have a handful of balance to start with if you need it. We're straightening out both legs and we're really pushing away that top line, remember, because we want the space at the waist so that we're in pelvic neutral. We're going to engage those core muscles and we're going to lift away both legs, pushing the top line away a little bit further and inhale back down. Now your kneecaps should be pointing forwards, your ankles should be pointing forwards. There should be that gliding between the feet that you feel because you're pushing away the top line further than the bottom one to try and maintain that space at your waist. So we don't want to feel like we're collapsing in at this point. We want to try and keep that lower hand free as well so that it's not pressing into the Okay, one more like this. And then on the next one, we're going to add in, if you're able to, that lift away of the top line. So we lift even further, bring them back together and then down. So we push away the top line, we push it away even further to lift so we don't collapse in at the waist, light pressure on the bottom hand. Last one. Good. Okay, then we bring the whole top leg in front and relax it completely so that we can work the lower leg. So before we do anything, we rotate the lower leg inwards at the hip so that your big toe's reaching up and your kneecap's pointing forwards. We engage those core muscles, we lift as high as we're able to and glide as far forward as we're able to. Flex the ankle and glide it back. So keeping it up nice and high, keeping those core muscles working. Let's do one more. And then lower it back down. Okay, well done. Right, so we're going to roll onto our backs now to do some kind of pull down stretches. So if you lie on your back and we'll do some glutes work first. Pop your right ankle onto your left knee, bring your left knee towards you and feel that stretch in the right bottom cheek. And we're just going to hold into that, that stretch. It needs to be reasonably comfortable, don't push into anything nasty. And we'll just hold it. Now if you want a bit more of a stretch on the piriformis, you can push this knee out to the side a little wider as well and you'll feel a bit more of an intense stretch. Okay, then we're going to pop the left leg to the floor, keep the legs crossed, close the gap between your knees, take both knees over to the right hand side as you look to Okay, and then back to the centre and we'll uncurl the legs and go the other way. So left ankle onto right knee, right knee towards you and hold into that stretch. So remember, you could put a little bit of pressure on that left knee out to the side to increase the piriformis stretch if you want to. So remember, you can put a little bit of pressure on that left knee out to the side to increase the piriformis stretch if you want to. And then we'll bring that right foot to the floor, keep the legs crossed, cross them even more so there's no gap. Take both legs to the left as you look to your right. So you should feel a stretch somewhere around the right hip now. You may feel it a bit higher up into the back, it depends where your hip is. And then we're going to come back to the centre, uncross the legs. We'll bring both knees to your chest briefly. We're just going to do some little circles to loosen out the hips and the knees and the back. And then you can choose your lumbar stretch now. So you can either come into this position, knees to chest, or you can come up into that happy baby yoga stretch, um, if you're able to get into that position. You can make it easier by holding on to your trousers or your ankles. Ideally, you've got your hands on the outside of your foot. You're bringing your knees and your feet nice and wide, you've got about a ninety-degree angle on the knees. You're drawing your knees in towards your armpits. And then lastly, you're trying to get all of your back in contact with the floor at the same time. So your low back should be down, but also your shoulder blades are drawn down and back as well. That gives you a nice hamstring stretch as well as a lumbar stretch. And then we'll bring our feet together, heels to your bottom for the frog stretch, so you're bringing your knees out to the side. Uh, so you should be getting a stretch on your inner thigh here. If you don't get so much of a stretch like that, you can bring your feet to the floor and drop your knees out. You will have to make sure you're not arching your back away from the floor dramatically, so tuck your tailbone under a little bit so this stays nice and flush. Relax your shoulders, push your knees down. Okay, and then we'll bring knees back together. I want you to separate your feet and do a few little pelvic tilts. Now, you can do tilting backwards and forwards, or you can do some little rotations of the pelvis here. And it's just to loosen out the lower back and make sure you haven't been left with any stiffness after those deeper stretches. Okay, and then we'll roll onto our side and push up. Okay, and that's the end of the session. Thank you very much.